Bledge Legion, to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Sid.
Here.
Whit.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence.
We just have one correspondence. This is from America the Beautiful Concert. Dear Mayor DiStefano, we would like to take this opportunity to extend special thank you into the city of Middletown. It would not have been a successful concert without the stage loaned to us by the city of Middletown. Hudson Valley Honor Flight is a great organization, and we were honored and proud to help them continue their mission. And that was signed Jimmy Starr.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city. Mayor?
And tonight, Chief Huanchu was here, along with his Bureau commanders, Lieutenant Graziano and Lieutenant Tholen, to do, to conduct a penning ceremony in recognition of the promotions that have been done within the Middletown Police Department. As you know, Lieutenant Graziano was also promoted to Bureau Commander to join Lieutenant Tholen under the guidance of Chief Huanchu. And, excuse me, due to that movement, we had some openings within the police department because people moved up. So, tonight, we're going to have the chief, if he would come up.
Is he here?
And to recognize, and he'll conduct the ceremony, for Lieutenant Mark Doty, who I believe is a thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two-year member of the Middletown Police Department. Lieutenant Issam Khalil. Both were promoted by the Middletown Police Commission to their respective position of lieutenant. Sergeant Evan Cologne is also here, was promoted to sergeant. And Sergeant Jacqueline Welch, the first female to be promoted to a, is the terminology, command position or?
A supervisory.
Supervisory position within the Middletown Police Department. And those were, those promotions were conducted, and the interviews were conducted, and the promotions were done by the Middletown Police Commission. Detective Nathaniel Young, DeYoung is here. He was promoted by Chief Huanchu to the position of detective. So, from this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Huanchu, and he'll conduct the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. It is my honor and privilege to present to you tonight our most recent promotions of the Middletown Police Department. If I could have come forward and join me up here, Lieutenant Mark Doty, Lieutenant Issam Khalil, Sergeant Evan Cologne, Sergeant Jacqueline Welch, and Detective Nathaniel DeYoung. First appearance in public, as you. I'd like to first congratulate all of you. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I'd also like to thank the council and the commission for giving us this opportunity to promote and move forward the Middletown Police Department. To the families and friends of my new supervisors, I appreciate everything you do to support them and to allow them to work with us here in the Middletown Police Department. I know they put in countless hours and time and dedication, and this is the reward for all of that. So, I'd like to thank you for your commitment to the department, to the community. You have all worked hard to earn and to achieve these promotions. Thank you for being willing to, for willing to step up and take on these additional responsibilities. There's going to be a lot of challenges. You're going to have a lot of things to learn and to address as we move forward, but I could assure you that myself, Lieutenant Graziano, Lieutenant Tholen, and the rest of the supervisory staff with the Middletown Police Department will be here to support you in this journey. You'll be instrumental in the moving, in moving this organization forward, as you will be the direct link between administration and our command staff, or our subordinates. You will be the direct link that will help us achieve these goals through your direction. And without further ado, I would like to pin each and every one of you with your new shield. Sergeant Tholen. Sergeant Mark Doty, you are now promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Sergeant Issam Khalil, you've been promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Once again, I'd like to congratulate each and every one of you. I look forward to working with you. You guys have all worked extremely hard to achieve these accomplishments. I've had the privilege to work with you throughout my tenure, and I could attest to each and every one of your commitment to the department, and you have the core values that we need to move this department forward. Could have a round of applause for a newly appointed. Pull out to your families. There are refreshments next door for you and your families. The council meeting will continue. You're more than welcome to stay if you want. Or would you?
We're going to take a short break, and then we'll go back with our council. For the good of the city, anyone would like to address this council, please step forward. You have four minutes.
My name is Eric. I helped work with the parking wrecks department and the local skateboarders and the skatepark builders to just make sure that it's the beautiful thing we see outside. And I just wanted to come here and say thank you to everyone here for their commitment to the city and the speed at which this project was done. And everybody is thrilled with this. The reaction is just overwhelmingly positive. So, just thank you. I wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, members of the common council. I just wish to briefly report on the partnership that the larger city school district of Middletown is doing with Middletown Community Health Centers, along, as well with Affinity. This partnership, working with the public and private sector, will allow our school district to provide our children with very important medical needs, especially in the area of preventive care. Among them, full dental services for each school, point-of-care testing such as strep, throat, flu, throat cultures, immunization data at each school, partnership during annual health fairs, same-day appointments for issues as needed, and assistance in accessing health care insurance. And even though the children are not required to apply to Affinity, but the option will be there available. Many of our children within the, our community don't happen to have health care, and these are vital services. So, working in partnership with the private sector, such as Affinity and the community health center, we hope to, in an efficient and effective manner, meet the needs of our schoolchildren. And I think it's one step in the right direction. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'm hoping today that the council will approve the we-care marching permits, because, yes, even though we were able to get the power plant pipelines permits denied, I have to disagree with the council. All darts matter when it comes to clean air and clean water. Also, DECA is expected to be removed, and that means thousands of children will lose the opportunity to live in this great and amazing country. And still, we are in a sanctuary for the least among us. That's not why I'm here today. I remember when I was in fifth grade, in, I was in the library in Maple Hill Elementary School, and there was an announcement on, all the, all the adults started crying, and so were some of the kids. And then there was a second announcement, and kids were getting picked up from school. And then, you know, I had to take the bus back, but I'm never going to forget the day. I opened the door, and my mom's crying in front of the TV. The images burned into my mind, and I asked my mom, "Why are you crying?" And she told me that my dad was assigned to work in the towers today. And I, and she said that she tried contacting him, but he wasn't answering the phone. And I'm thinking to myself, "Why is a police officer assigned to a building?" So, three days passed by, and we still haven't heard from my dad. Then we hear a knock on the door, and it was my dad. And this dark-skinned man was now whiter than I was, and he had this look of despair on his face. I still don't know why he never called, but he did tell me his story. He was in the first building when the plane hit. A piece of debris hit his partner from above. They made it down and out, and as he was driving away, in the rearview mirror, he saw the building collapse. For the next three days, without sleep, my dad was trying his best to help the victims, both the survivors and the dead alike. That's why, that's the day he lost his faith in God. And the day I learned that heroes don't stay silent and act, but act, even when it seems helpless, hopeless. The firefighters, the police officers, and all those who stand up for the least among us, these are the heroes, and my brothers and sisters. I'm proud of this city, but I'm disgusted by its politicians. I hate coming up and speaking, and I hate the attention, because I am shy in real life. But enough is enough. I said violent crimes were on the decline, yet the council can't understand why people, such as the rabbi from Mount Sinai, or the immigrants, or the least among us don't feel safe. There's already ICE raids happening in Orange County, and I promise you, it's only going to get worse. When one out of five people in Middletown live in poverty, giving out unnecessary fines to a shrinking population can mean the difference between feeding your child or getting your driver's license removed. Yes, violent crimes have been going down nationally, but you guys are the dangers in Middletown and democracy, when you guys colluded to get my name off the ballot to give, to stop people from getting a second voice.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And I say everything with all due respect, as I respect all your positions in our, in our elected government. I'm hoping that you will serve the people to the best of your abilities and do the proper due diligence that that takes to properly represent the people. So, the first thing I want to do, my name is Scott Martens. I was born and raised in the city of Middletown. I traveled, I went to school in a different state, and I came back here with my wife so that we could raise our children here, because I believe that this is the most beautiful place to be. And I live now in the Menasink Valley. I want to first give you guys an update on the CPV power plant and where the construction stands. Last week, the New York State DEC denied the 401 water quality permit for the pipeline that will feed fracked gas to this plant. That is huge. What that means is that for anybody out there who says it's too late, it's not. And the door is now open for politicians like yourselves to stand up for the rights of the citizens. And I urge you all to do that, please. Newhouse did it. Berkman did it. The representative from Middletown in the county legislature, our county executive, and an assemblyman from our county is also behind this fight. So, I urge you all to do the same. There's a few comments I'd like to make to set the record straight, based on statements that were made at last month's city council meeting. The CPV power plant and Millennium Valley Pipeline are inextricably linked. One cannot function without the other. They are not separate. The pipeline will feed fracked gas to the plant to make it operational. It cannot operate without. It only has a permit to operate for thirty days of in a whole year on another source. So, to say that they are separate is absolutely ludicrous. In fact, it's against the law. This is the question called illegal segmentation. Segmentation refers to when an entity attempts to separate a project into components so the overall effects appear reduced. This is what CPV and Millennium have done in tandem to make this project look better than it actually is. The assertion was also made that the city's only involvement with CPV was solely for the wastewater for the cooling. But the truth is, is that Middletown's agreement to let CPV use this gray water enabled CPV to happen, period. They, the CPV company would never have gotten the necessary permitting if they would have had to use the water from the Walkeville River aquifer. It is our sole aquifer. They never would have been allowed to do that. By the city of Middletown agreeing to let them use the wastewater, that allowed this project to proceed. Not only that, CPV was also granted two zoning waivers to facilitate the construction of CPV's auxiliary facilities within the city limits. There are CPV auxiliary buildings in the city of Middletown. That makes it the city of Middletown's interest. Middletown's contractual obligation, the city of Middletown's contractual obligation to CPV is far more important, is, is not more important than the rights to stand up for the public health and safety of its constituents. It is not. It is not health, wealth over health. It is health over wealth. You cannot agree to something until you have been sure that it is not going to harm your citizens. And that was never done. In fact, that was the whole basis of the DEC denial of the permit. It was denied because there was an improper environmental review.
Your four minutes are up.
So, it's been sent back. Can I please have one more minute, sir? Thank you. The real environmental benefit would have been for the city of Middletown to never have allowed this project to happen. To say that, that the city of Middletown made the project more environmentally sound by using this gray water, it's really not the honest truth. And that is the truth. If the city of Middletown knew about this project for fifteen years, like it was asserted, why is it that not at one point did they ask for public approval? Or even just ask the residents what they thought about this? Why doesn't everybody know about this? If this was out, all, on the open for fifteen years? There was also an unbelievable statement made blaming the citizens themselves for this power plant, claiming that if you don't run as a citizen, and this is for everybody watching, if you don't run as a citizen, you're to blame for something like this happening. That is an unfair and undemocratic statement, and you cannot allow this to happen. We, as citizens, rely on our elected officials to work in our best interest and include us in important decision-making, like a plant of this magnitude. This isn't a small plant. This will be the biggest power plant of its kind in New York. It will represent ten percent of the total greenhouse gas emissions for the entire state in one place, and it sits right next to the fourth ward. The environmental impact, the environmental justice impact alone is staggering and criminal.
I gave you an extra minute.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. And thank you all very much for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Anyone else would like to address council?
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Sweeney. I'm a resident of the town of Greenville. I recently watched the August fifteenth Middletown Common Council meeting on public access television. During this meeting, Mayor DiStefano made the following comments in regards to the use of Middletown gray water in cooling the CPV power plant. The communities that need to speak, and I've said to Mr. Martens, when he was here a few times, were the communities like Way Weanda, Menasink, Greenville, and those local communities need to speak loudly. Ironically, in regards to CPV, I don't believe there are any candidates challenging people in any of those races. So, you speak in the ballot box. If you oppose, you're a resident of Way Weanda, and you have friends that live in Way Weanda, and they approve a project that you don't support, and you don't run for office or get somebody else to run for office, don't blame it on me and the city of Middletown. Don't blame it on the common council here in the city of Middletown. Blame it on yourself. Blame it on the people that live there who oppose the project. Not one. I checked today on the Board of Elections website, and I don't believe there is one Democrat. No, I'm a Democrat. I don't believe there is one Democrat running for town councilman or supervisor in any of those communities. So, shame on them, not shame on us. So, we made a business decision on a project that was going to be built and be constructed, and it's to benefit our citizens, and it's also an environmentally positive impact decision that we made. You can spin it any way you want, but you can't dispute the fact that rather than using groundwater, potable water, that they're going to be using treated sewage water to cool this project. While Mr. DiStefano was incorrect when stating that there were no Democrats running in those communities, I'm running for town councilman in the town of Greenville, and there's also three individuals running in Way Weanda, two for councilman and two, one for supervisor. I had contacted him requesting that he correct this inaccuracy during this meeting. However, during, I did not receive any indication that this would happen, and so I decided to come make this statement for anyone living in either Greenville or Way Weanda who may be watching tonight, so that I can set the record straight that there are individuals contesting those elections. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Can I get one more minute?
No. Remarks of Department Head, Economic Development. Mr. Fernandez, please don't leave. I want to answer, I want to answer your corrupt, what you call corruption, and, and what you call colluding. All right, Maria.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to let you know what a great summer we had with all our events. We wrapped up our summer events, and now we're on to fall and the holiday season. At the Paramount, we're, we have a couple shows coming up. We have an opera this weekend and next weekend, comedy show, Donnell Rawlings. And then, throughout the, the rest of the season, we're introducing our sci-fi weekend, movie weekend, and horror ton weekend. So, as you can see, the activities will continue. Check our website. Also, the Bid District is putting out a call for a Christmas tree for our Festival Square event, so we're gearing up for the holiday season, as you can see. And also, don't forget our CDBG program, Housing Rehab. Please contact us if you want to know about housing rehab and small business loans. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Regarding the water meter project, as you, as you know, we have, we are working with ESG regarding replacing water meters throughout the city of Middletown with the new, more modern mag meters. They are much more accurate, and the resident will be able to go on a website, see how much water they have used. If there's any leakage in there in their system, a text message or an email can be sent over to them. They can really conserve water and watch what, how much water they use. It's an excellent water conservation project. However, out of seven thousand five hundred, so far, we have around eight to nine hundred people who have not responded. You have gotten so many notifications, so I respectfully request that everybody calls PMI, the company that's been trying to call you. They have tried like six different times with door knockers. We tried ourselves, the water department, to get your attention. We are left with two choices. This, this, this program will not happen piecemeal. It has to be done all at once in there in order to be, for it to be cost-effective and to be worth the investment. So, we are faced with two, with two options in here. One is to shut the water off for residents, which we don't want to do, although we have sent out the notification and writing to each and every one. It's mandatory replacement. If you don't respond, unfortunately, the water may have to be shut off. Of course, we don't want to do that. But the other option is, we have like water meter reading surcharge, which is, it's up to the Board of Estimate and the common council to decide on that. There's probably going to be about $200. I don't know. I'm just speculating. I'm only, the commissioner, I don't, I don't set the, the, the cost of, of reading, but we're going to have to work on that. So, you're going to be assessed instead of water meters, instead of water and sewer bill being high, and there's going to be higher yet, because it's going to cost us more money to come over and physically read your meter instead of it, the signal, instead of the signal being automatically transferred over to City Hall and to the cloud where it's available for you and it's available for us. It's a greener solution. We don't have to drive around. We don't have to do anything. The signal is coming right back to us in there. So, help us, please, make sure that this project go to completion, and so we can be proud of it, and you guys can be proud of it. So, those eight hundred people, please respond to us as soon as possible. Otherwise, the contract is almost winding down. ESG is not going to be here for a lot, for much longer. If we don't do it, there's going to be a penalty, unfortunately, associated with it, and we don't want to do that. So, please help us. Woolworth Building tomorrow, North Street, because of the construction of the Woolworth Building, North Street will be closed from seven AM in the morning until 10 AM, from seven until 10 AM. Please avoid that area. The reason behind it is because the contractor, the GC, wants to put his fencing up, and they have to drill some holes into the sidewalk. After 10 o'clock, the sidewalk will be reopened. Part of the sidewalk in front of Woolworth will not be accessible to the public, but you can still walk on that side of the street. I did tell you about Manhattan Brook repair between the water department and the DPW department in there. Took us almost year and a half, two years, to get the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. The work was completed in less than a week, and it's all completed and done. So, with that, I will conclude my remarks. I want to say that I admire the people who are fighting, you know, for what they believe in, and no question about it, but I don't have, I don't have any hesitation in my mind as an engineer and as the commissioner of public works to say that. City of Middletown did make CPV greener. I know some people may not like to hear that. A green, not greener. A green project as much as, as far as their water cooling requirements are concerned, because when they came to us many years ago, and the option was for them to drill into the aquifer and to get water from the aquifer for their cooling system. Whether, whether they were successful or not, I don't know. I mean, here's the plant, it's almost been completed, the construction has been completed, and they still may not be successful. So, it's, it's very hard to speculate. But our understanding at the time that CPV was going to utilize the groundwater in their aquifer for their cooling water needs, and that would have been, I believe, would have been a disaster for everyone, and especially for, especially for us who are trying to conserve every drop of water and save every drop of water we can. And I hope I addressed that.
Any questions? Al McLeaner?
Thank you. You know, people have been asking for twenty, twenty-five years that, for, if they can get a traffic light at Oliver and Manhattan Avenue. And that intersection just gets blinder and busier and busier, and I want to thank the commissioner. Yeah, third ward. I, I want to thank the commissioner because what he did was, in the meantime, striped the crosswalk where the crosswalk meets up with Oliver Avenue and put pedestrian crossing signs, and you can see people slowing down when they see it. So, thank you very much. It's certainly a big help.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then one other point quickly. Do we have anything new on New York Rising? Some people were asking me.
New York Rising, the engineers are still, the consultants, they are still working on gathering data and just preparing. on gathering data and just preparing reports. We have not had any contact, meaningful contact with them about any ideas about design or anything like that. They're just gathering information and data. And, you know, it's an extensive, extensive effort. And...
You just need to finish before the funding runs out.
Yeah, no, no, I think we're, we're good with the funding.
Okay. Thank you.
That's New York City firm.
Anyone else on the council? Thank you, Jacob. Fire Chief.
Good evening. Just, I'm here to remind everybody, it's a busy week for us at the fire department. Parade's coming up. Tomorrow night is our white hat party at 6:30 at the American Legion. I hope you all can make it. I hope you answer Sean back, because he gets on my back, you guys don't answer sometimes. And then on Friday night, we'll meet at 6 o'clock, the City Hall, for the inspections of all three firehouses and the fire police. And then on Saturday is the parade, lineups at 12, I'm sorry, at 2 o'clock, and step offs at 3:00 on Highland Avenue. Hope everybody can make it. Supposed to be nice weather, so, cool in the seventies, no rain, so, hope everybody can make it. And that's really all I have. Is there any questions?
We have a resolution today for the, the new fire truck.
Yes, there is, yes.
Rescue. You want to brief us on it, or?
I could, I can. They've been a committee for a long time, and engine one definitely is in need of a new truck. It's a, it's a 94, it's 23 years old, it's held together enough by too much. It's really falling apart. So we've had a couple of different people, manufacturers come to us with specs, and we met with Farrar, and I think the price is around $650,000 for a new engine, a rescue engine, which they, we use it for, for MBAs, for fire calls and everything. They do two, two things they do. And there's some equipment on the truck as part of the, part of the bid, and then the other stuff we put towards our bid in our budget for next year. So there'll be no separate bid now for equipment, because we're transferring stuff over. Some stuff, like ladders and hoes and the other stuff, is in the bid for the truck. So it's around 650. They can, Greg Hopkins here, he's the committee chairman. He can speak up if he wants, but it's definitely in need of a new engine. It's, no, running too good. Seriously, it's really not.
Question for Fire Chief? Or the Committee? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys. Hope to see you tomorrow night.
Please, Chief.
Good evening, Council, once again. I have a couple of things just to briefly address without getting into too much detail. Unfortunately, the city suffered two tragic incidents over the last several weeks. One being Thursday, August 17th, we had a homicide on Walker Avenue, where it's very unfortunate, but the city lost a 19-year-old member of the community. And then unfortunately, again, on this past Sunday, September 3rd, we had an additional incident which a member of our community lost their life. This happened on the railroad tracks off of Wickham Avenue. It was an assault, which, due to the injuries, the subject later succumbed and, and passed away. One thing I would do want to express to you and to the community is we are actively working this. The incident from this past weekend, we did make an arrest. It was an acquaintance of the person. The arrest has been made. Everything's been tied up on that. The Walker Avenue one, we have followed up on more than 100 leads. They continue to come in. One obstacle that we continue to face is the non-cooperation of certain individuals. So as a community, if we could encourage the members of our community to help facilitate some cooperation and help us come to a successful conclusion for the, the White family, there's multiple ways that we can relay information. If you're reluctant to speak with us in person or on telephone, and let us know who you are, we have a tip line. It's 346-4009. You can leave a message anonymously. Off of our website, there's an anonymous tip section that you could do an email that is not traceable to anyone. You can leave us any type of information that you have. You can send us a letter. You could call anonymously, whatever it may be. But as a community, we need to come together to help resolve situations like this and to prevent them in the future. So please, I encourage the members of our community to come together and give us some additional detailed direction on how to resolve some of this. Lastly, I have in regards to Fire Chief's comment about the fire parade, just a reminder, the streets will be closed for the fire parade. There will be some inconveniences. Highland Avenue, West Main Street, North Street, out to Wickham Avenue. Again, it's for a good cause, so please bear with us. We'll do our best to open up traffic as soon as we can.
Any question for the Chief? Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Recreation.
As most of you know, the skate park did open with a ribbon cutting on, on Friday at 3:00, and I don't think there's been bodies off of that since, except to sleep in when it rains. A lot of adults using it. The adults are showing the younger children proper skate park etiquette. I have to give credit to some of our teens. I, I see them picking up garbage and trying to keep it clean for those that are not. We have added more garbage cans, and we do want the public to know benches are coming. We just wanted to get that opened as quick as we could, once the concrete was dry and the holiday weekend, it was definitely used. We're going to be meeting with a professional skateboarder tomorrow. We do have one that lives in this town, Burton Smith, and he's going to give us some suggestions of what he sees in other towns with big skate parks, and possibly running some clinics and doing some special events in the community with the skate park. So we're looking forward to doing some work with him, and he's going to be working with us. Another great project that is, is starting to finish up here, we have a disc golf course, a frisbee golf course going in up in the back of Davage. It does not affect the woods, it does not affect the bird watchers. The first nine holes will cost $3,000. We got $2,100 already donated by residents that were out interested in doing this. Residents have been volunteering their time, clearing, clearing brush. Our, our maintenance guys built a great little bridge. If you get a chance to walk out there, basically, all the holes are done, we just got to put the baskets in, and they, and we're, and we're ready to do that. So next year, we're looking to do another nine holes, and actually be 18 holes. Warwick does have a disc golf course. It is packed constantly, and I think we're going to see that crowd also coming into Middletown to engage in that activity. So that's a great thing. Maple Hill Pool, you're going to see some construction up there soon. We're going to be doing the resurfacing of that. That's the last of our old concrete pools. A lot of the concrete slowly kept falling into the pool this summer. We didn't make it through the summer. So this won't be a huge cost to the city at all, like Davage Park ended up being. So thank you for being proactive. Thank you for allowing us to get that fixed, and before the fall ends, all that, that new surface will be in there. We do know that the Fireman's Parade is Saturday, but also just a reminder to the public that on Sunday is the Rotary Horse Show up at Davage Park. That also is a great family event. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Sorry. Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Corporation Council.
Okay. I'll start.
Any question for Richard? Thank you. City Clerk?
Just a couple of things. Going back to the fire parade this Saturday, the closings will be on the website, so everybody should be watching that to making sure the times when the roads will be closed and when they'll be open. There is a resolution tonight for the OK of the zoning map. That is just to put the official zoning map as July 1st into the city code, and after that is approved tonight, it will go to, it'll be on the website, and it also will be, have to go to the county, which will be taken care of in the next few days. And that's all I have for tonight.
Questions? John, thank you. Remarks of the Mayor.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate the Truck Committee of the Monhagen Fire Company for their excellent work, and especially Tom Embidio, former chief, who, when the committee came in originally with the truck, I think we were pushing in excess of $800,000, and Tom promised to bring the truck in in the sixes, and, and he did, and they're getting what they want also. So an excellent job by Tom and, and the Truck Committee, and we look forward to the parade on, on Saturday, and hopefully, everyone will be able to make the, the Friday night inspections. The Skateboard Park, as Chris said, has been, has been crazy, actually. We've really had a huge crowd every single day, and they are taking care of the project and the park, and we have also, Chris mentioned, added some garbage cans, but they, they became so busy that the cans were overflowing, and, but they still laid the garbage right around the can, which was nice, so. But we, we didn't know there'd be that much of a hit, but it was. And I want to thank the hard work of the, all involved, from Jacob and Chris to Maria, John Bianchi, and all the volunteers. It was nice to have Eric come tonight and say thank you, but Eric was an, you know, instrumental in assisting Spohn Ranch with the design. I also saw him take a header on it on opening day, and I don't know how he got up, but he did. So it was, it's been a very successful project, and just so everyone keeps in mind, that whole area will be redesigned, and that's why we're not moving too quickly with the benches. And the architects will be hired in the very near future to complete the design under the $10 million downtown revitalization grant. Also, thank you to Kevin Gomez for that report on the health program through the schools. Much needed and necessary. And I need to, as you know, respond to a couple of things. One, you know, we've been through the, the CPV thing, you know, a few times, and there's been a lot of misrepresentations here, and they're not on our side. The misrepresentations are about the level of review of this project. And all of the people that have been coming here and to these meetings and other meetings and saying that we don't have faith in the DEC or the EPA are the very same people applauding the decision by the DEC not to issue the millennium permit, the millennial pipeline permit for the CPV. So it is not our job here in the city of Middletown, I can't say it over and over and over again, to review, to do the environmentals, to spend millions of dollars of city taxpayers' money on a project that is in the town of Way Weyanda. This review to represent that the review, the level of review that this project underwent, and to paint a picture that the city was excluded from this review and analysis of the project air emissions is just not true. The modeling of the facility is dictated by the scientific methods established by the EPA and approved by the DEC. The process requires a radius to be studied. That radius included Middletown, and is independent of municipal boundaries, as I stated. There is no distinction between the town or city boundaries whatsoever, and no way for a specific area to be excluded from the review. So the Middletown review, Middletown was included in the project review and everything else within the geographic area. Given the project's proximity to the city of Middletown, the air impacts to the city were studied extensively and have been highlighted and approved by the DEC. This has been highlighted to the, and they have been pointing out to the E, the EIS, the opponents, they have been appointed to it in the environmental impact statement that shows the area studied, yet they keep making comments implying that nothing was studied here for the city of Middletown impact. Despite highlighting all of these facts on a number of occasions, they continue, continue to try to elicit panic by telling people that the plants were not evaluated, the plant was not evaluated. They went so far as to sue the New York State DEC on the valleys, on CPV Valley's air permit. The judge heard their claim and denied it. They produced no credible evidence for the court. The court denied their claim and found that the DEC did everything appropriately when issuing the air permit. They tried to appeal the judge's decision, and then they abandoned their case in court. This was just another demonstration that their accusations and claims just aren't true, and they're just really don't want to have a debate with the public or with the people on these type of issues. The millennial pipeline is a separate permit, and as the first permit, I will stand behind whatever the DEC and the EPA do in that regards. You can't come here and boast or pound your chest and say that the DEC rejected this permit, but, and the DEC is right today, but the other decisions are wrong. It just doesn't make sense. The people who have the responsibility, the expertise, the financing to do the environmental evaluation of this plant is the DEC and the EPA, and whatever, whatever other studies that the town of Way Weyanda may or may not have required as part of the approval process when they threw, went through the planning board. So again, I don't think Middletown taxpayers would appreciate us spending several millions of dollars on projects in surrounding communities, and we have state and federal agencies that are doing that. Whether the DEC made the right decision or not, I don't know. In some ways, I don't really care. It's not a Middletown project. It's about a $1 billion project that is on the outskirts of the city, and really, there's going to be, if the plant opens, there will be a benefit financially to the city of Middletown by the sale of gray water, which does make the project, the CPV project green. We can disagree on that with the people who oppose it, but they can't say that by the city providing gray water to the project, they cannot definitively say that the project would not have happened because they had other options. As for all the fuel sources, I don't know. That's up to the DEC, who everyone is applauding right now. They did a great job for all the people who oppose that project. They themselves are saying the DEC was right. I understand the process has more to go. It's a wait and see for us, but I don't think the people want me to raise their taxes to go fight a project in the town of Way Weyanda when the state and EPA are doing that very job. Now, as for Mr. Sweeney's comments, I think when he read my quote, he said, I don't, I don't believe, so I don't think I represented it as an accurate, 100% accurate, but I'm going to read you in 13, in 2013 and 2015, in the town of Greenville, no Democrat ran for office. Seven offices each year, not one Democrat ran for office. The town of Menasink, seven offices, 2013, 2015, when this project was going through the approval process. 2000, I think, I don't have the 11 figures here, but I thought I printed them, but I didn't. I believe it was the same thing in 2011. So while this project was going through the approval process, not one of these gentlemen stood up to run for office or to voice their concern about the project as far as the record here shows at the Board of Elections. Way Weyanda did have candidates, not for all the races, but for, for most of them. In fact, the most ardent opponents to the, to the project, they ran on that. Mr. Hurst, I recall his election. He was defeated. The Way Weyanda people spoke. So I don't, I don't know what else to, what they're hoping to accomplish by getting Middletown, sticking Middletown, or attempting to stick Middletown into a battle that we have a contractual relationship with over this project, but I have confidence, as they do, because they said it tonight, they like the DEC decision, that the DEC and the EPA will do the right thing. If the right thing is denying the opening of the CPV plant, I'm not going to Middletown taxpayers and asking them to fight the appeal and to appeal the decision, just like I'm not going to go to them and try to block the project. It's, it's standing on its own, and it's, when it's been approved, it stood on its own. When their permits have been denied, it stands on its own. It's not a Middletown, a city of Middletown issue, as far as I see it. So the, one other issue that Mr. Martens mentioned about zoning waivers, again, not true. He's not telling you that the city attorney researched the connection at 17M, and although CPV is paying for the construction of that connection, that will be owned by the New York Power Authority and is exempt from city zoning. Our city attorney, Alex Smith, did extensive research on that matter, issued a written legal opinion to the Common Council, to myself, and just like any other utility in certain areas, they are exempt from that zoning. So, so again, a, not a true statement regarding the project. But as we move forward, I hope that they will at least recognize that the DEC did do their job and that they were happy with the outcome, and if that's the end game, then so be it. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I will certainly take them. I don't have any other, any other comments for this evening.
Rick Otho?
Yes? Can I beat a dead horse and ask about West Main?
I thought, did you ask about?
No, he asked about New York.
Oh, New York Rising?
I'm asking about...
Two weeks? Oh, yeah. The, oh, you're talking about Rich Mayfield's money?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. It was in the newspaper, so they advertised it.
Yes.
Yeah, so Jacob says they're telling us two weeks. It's tomorrow. But we'll continue. We had Mr. Mayfield here last week. And I threatened to give out his home phone number. So maybe we'll have to do that because he's not delivering.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Massey.
Please bear with me tonight. I do have a few things. One on the skate park. I was amazed and am so pleased to see that. I just think it's, it's great. The fire truck, I hope that the full council will go along with what we did at the Board of Estimate. I did miss the Ben Gilman Way. Congressman Gilman was a friend of mine, and I did bring that to the, to the common council. And I am sorry that I missed it because I believe I probably would have been able to speak. And I wanted to acknowledge someone, and unfortunately, I was probably one of the few people that knew this. Uh, so he was not mentioned. Michael Russo is the young man that brought that to me. His father worked for Congressman Gilman for 40 years. And at times Ralph actually thought he was the congressman. But anyway, Michael came to me and he said, you know, "Would you present this?" And I said, "Well, let me go speak to the mayor," and I did. And then the mayor said, "If you want to sponsor it, bring it to the council." And I appreciate the fact that you people all approved it. And like I say, I am sorry I wasn't there because I would have brought up. But I just think Michael needs, uh, some recognition because I'm not sure I would have thought of it. When I would have thought of it, it happened. I'm glad it happened. And I just wanted Michael to get some recognition. Now, Maria, I want to apologize to you for interrupting, but I was really hoping Mr. Fernandez would have stuck around just a little bit longer. And I'm hoping this will be the last time we discuss this gentleman. But when he throws words of corruption around at the last meeting and collusion at this meeting and then gets up and leaves, I, I think the people have a right and should know what the truth is. Yes, he is no longer a candidate. Yes, he did file petitions. And yes, every time he comes up, although for whatever reason, tonight he didn't mention that he has a degree in mathematics. I taught mathematics. And one of the first things I taught people was how do you count and how do you add? Then I also taught them that 170 is less than 185. And you'll understand where I'm going with this. They are basics. When I went to the Board of Election, and I knew that, look, every one of us, when we run for office, we know what the rules are. We know how many signatures we must get. We know how to get the signatures, what's right, what's wrong. Long story short, we know what the rules are. In order for this gentleman, and by the way, the name of his party, Anti-Corruption Party, that's what he was running on. He needed 185 signatures. He brought down what he said was 174. So once again, 185 is greater than 174, should not be on the ballot. It doesn't stop there. He actually had 170, so he can't count. When looking at the petitions, and I got a copy of the petitions, and I have them here before I made my objection, I looked and I saw signatures patio row. I, I knew they were not in the city of Middletown. A, a rule of thumb is if a person can't vote for you, they can't sign your petition. So the final analysis, and, and the letter is here, and I was surprised that he actually put it on Facebook, and then he took it down. But the final analysis is out of the 170 that he filed, which by the way, was 92% of what he needed, 93 were disqualified. 93 were disqualified. He remained with 77 valid. He needed 185. That comes to 41.6%, since he's a mathematician, I want to be sure I got this correctly, of what he needed. So that's the reason he was excluded from the, from being on the ballot. There was no collusion. When I file mine, when Tommy files his, when Jerry files his, if anyone's running against them, we normally go down and we look at petitions to see, have you done it correctly? It's a normal procedure. So this gentleman, although he likes to espouse about anti-corruption, what he did, by the way, is very close to a criminal act. But he's done now. When you watch this and you're having your glass of wine, Alex, I hope that this will be the end. You're more than welcome to come and speak on city matters, but please stop accusing other people of wrongdoing when it was the Board of Election and they spelled it out step by step by step what you did wrong. That's the reason you're not running for mayor. It's not because of anybody here. It's not because of the mayor. It's because of you. I'm sorry I took so much time, but I just was hoping, I want people to be clear on this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd also like to thanks Chris, the staff, and everybody that made the skate park have great success. And I also, um, another thing, I want to congratulate all our officers on their promotions. Well deserved. And, uh, I'll see everybody Wednesday night at the White Hat Party. Thank you.
Tommy's cooking, so I'm already going. Joe, I just really briefly, thank you for that, for clarifying that. I think that was important. The skate park, I was able to be there on Friday. I was very happy to be able to attend. I myself was also shocked at just how packed it was. The design is outstanding. Eric, I know you had a lot to do with that, so you came and thanked us, but I think we should thank you for your input and everyone else who sat on that committee. Uh, I know that there was a lot of public feedback that made that happen, and it's outstanding. And Rayland asked me where my skateboard was on Friday, and I told her it was in 1994 where I left it. And, uh, I could not get up if I had fallen the way I saw some people falling on Friday. I'm pretty sure of that. It's just, I'm like, ah, youth, you know, tumble over, get up and go back at it again. I do remember doing it myself, but it's exciting. I'm glad to hear that it's being self-policed and that so far, so good. And I'm, I'm really happy for our community and, and what we have to offer here in Middletown. Neighborhood Watch, we have a meeting next week, Tuesday the 12th. Just kind of in response to what Chief Ilancho said this evening. This is our, this was our ward where the Wallkill Avenue crime was committed. And we've had some people prior to this reach out to myself on Neighborhood Watch to address issues that they were having, which were with crime. And, you know, we encourage them to be at the meeting, to make sure that they called the police when they saw something happening or if they felt concerned about something going on in their neighborhood. And I would only hope that they understand that you're not helping yourself and your community by allowing someone to walk free for committing such a horrible crime. And I really hope that, you know, you come attend the meeting. And like Chief said, it is okay to report anonymously, but, you know, we do need the community's help to solve these crimes. So I encourage people to come to the meetings, to get involved, and to always, always, always do not hesitate to pick up the phone and call the police department when you see something that you just don't think is right. No matter how small you think it is, just don't be afraid to call. I'm looking forward to the fire parade on Saturday. I encourage the public to come out and support our fire department. And, you know, it's a great way to show them your appreciation is to line the streets, clap for them as they walk by, our volunteers especially, who give of themselves their time away from their families to serve our community. You know, I think this is a nice way to say thanks, so I hope I see a lot of faces out on the parade route on Saturday. For our officers promoted this evening, they're all outstanding. They all deserve those promotions. As female, obviously, I'm very proud to see our first female sergeant in Middletown police history. So girl power. I, uh, first day of school today was successful in the Ram Cassoon household. I hope that's true for everyone in the community. Uh, Middletown does boast a pretty fantastic school district, I will say that. For the quality of education my kids themselves are receiving, I'm excited for them all. I wish everybody a great school year. So that's my best of luck to our kids and our community. Brink, thank you for the after-school sports academy. I'm sure it's going to be outstanding. I don't want to ramble on, but I think those things are important. And, uh, I believe that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Alman Johnson.
Thanks. Tomorrow and tomorrow and tomorrow creeps, well, I hope Mr. Mayfield will help us out with that. I want to also concur with Alderman Kleiner that something as simple as a crosswalk and a little green person does catch people's attention, and it can be very effective. Uh, with respect to our Wallkill situation and the crime, it is certainly counterintuitive that members of the community would choose not to come forward when this person was part of their community as well. But I'm sure that the police department will eventually ferret that all out. Uh, it also speaks to, we've talked about briefly about the portal project on the part of the DA. This would be another example, if anybody had a, had a cellphone or had a camera on their driveway, this would be another piece of the puzzle to kind of put things together. And I hope that that can happen in a timely manner. With respect to the skateboard park, once again, congrats. Hopefully we'll continue to meet all of our expectations, both as far as participation and just an effective portion of glue in our community. I also wanted to mention, as far as the school district goes, I had the opportunity to tour the newly reconstructed portion of the high school a week or two ago. It's exciting. Uh, I learned that it's part of what they're calling collaborative learning, that it was studied at the University of Indiana and at Maris College. It was a dead roof space. It's now hopefully a cutting-edge learning space. I also got a chance to see downstairs where the weight room is. Now, my kids went through the school, uh, yeah, 10 to 20 years ago. So that's the building that I remember walking through. The downstairs is pretty spectacular with the learning space, with the genius bar, with the fact that they'll be open later in the evening so that students can continue their learning process with a state-of-the-art teleconference room. Of course, a facility does not make a program. Uh, the implementation and the professionals who will guide the students make the program. But it certainly is a, is a tremendous start. And if you blink your eyes, you think you were walking through a college campus somewhere when you see that facility. And my congratulations to all who brought that project to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alman Witt.
Thank you very much. A couple of things. We have our second ward meeting is going to be next Monday, the 11th at 7:00. So we hope you come out if you choose. Congratulations to everybody involved in the skate park. That was, that was pretty cool the other day to watch all the, the kids be so excited about such, I mean, that, that was an absolute home run. And I appreciate, Eric, you coming out, and I don't think everyone was all that excited to see us cut a ribbon. But when you addressed the kids and said, "Listen, you know, this is ours. Let's not mess it up. Let's take care of it." I think that was very effective and very powerful coming from you because I could see and have seen during this process that your voice is very respected in that community. So thank you for playing that part in, in helping the policing of that. And finally, you know, today being the first day of school, I'm just reminding everybody that, um, there are a lot more kids on the roads now and to please, please pay attention when you're driving for these children because, you know, the ones that are small don't know any better and the ones who are older, sometimes are not paying attention. So, uh, we would hate to have some tragedy happen because somebody's focus wasn't where it needs to be. And you're going to get to where you need to be. It might take you a couple of minutes longer, but just please keep your head in the game. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I also want to congratulate the police department and the officers who were promoted. They're well deserved and were very well served in Middletown, so thank you. I got to look back first. We had, we haven't had a meeting in a while, so we had a lot of things happen. We had to run for downtown. I thank Dave Madden's, you know, Dave and Anna Madden and Marshall and Sterling. And we had a great turnout. SUNY Orange Solar Eclipse event, and I thank Dorothy Scheff, that had huge turnout. They ran out of glasses and eclipse glasses in no time, so I thank them for that. We, uh, the Ben Gilman Way, um, that was very touching and very nice. And, uh, thank you, Alderman Massey, and thank you, Michael Russo. And, uh, you're right on about Ralph. He, he was an amazing man, and sometimes he did think he was the congressman, so. The skate park, you build it, they will come. That's what, uh, you know, Eric and Louis and, uh, all the people in Operation Skate for years have claimed. And so far, uh, the turnout was tremendous, and it has been packed. So it's, it's really good to see, you know, not every kid wants to do a team sport. Some kids just like being on their own and challenging themselves. And so this, I think, is a, a great addition and put Middletown on the map in a lot of ways. Our constituents meeting, it is on September 11th, so it is a solemn day. But we're going to be here and we will carry on. Don't forget, Tuesday, September 12th, a citywide watch, but it's also a primary day. So for people in the fourth ward, go out and vote. September 17th is the Rotary Horse Show. Uh, September 17th is also Constitution Day. And that's the day that the Constitution was signed in 1787. So it's Citizenship and Constitution Day, so you can keep that in mind, too. And then quickly, you know, Mr. Bybrock on the county level resigned. So the Heritage Trail has, he's moving on. So the Heritage Trail has lost yet another project manager. So I hope the new County Public Works Commissioner will put that as one of his priorities. And I hope we will get a new County Parks Commissioner because that's really where it belongs, and we want to see it moving. I thank Kevin Gomez, and also Kevin's, um, presented us with, uh, a resolution that I hope we'll take up to increase the penalties for people passing school buses. And, uh, I certainly would support that. And, um, two things finally. Chief and Kate, and you know, the, another event that was packed was the funeral for Cory White Jr., amazing amount of people. And you may think there's some kind of honor code where you're not going to help, but what it is, it's a lack of moral courage. And you're disrespecting the young man's parents, and you're disrespecting your community. And it is up to you to make it right and speak out. And finally, um, someone who I knew and I think half of Middletown knew, unfortunately, Mr. Steve Skok, you would see him so often down at Shoprite in that area. And, uh, we learned that he had passed, and that's who they had found. And so rest in peace, my friend. Thank you.
John Francois.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, just what I'll apologize. We had a constituents' meeting that was set up for a past weekend, but due to the holiday weekend, we actually had to cancel it. But we also have a makeup meeting decided September 8th at 10:00 in this chamber. I would encourage everybody to come out and, and join us. And when we do have the constituents' meeting, we're not there to only listen to concerns and issues that you have in the fourth ward. We also like to invite people to come and talk to us about, if they have any idea, anything that we could do better in the fourth ward. We appreciate your input. Maybe we could implement that. So please come and join us this Saturday at 10:00 in this chamber. Thank you very much. And also, uh, the skate park, kudo to all those that's involved. Great job. And looking forward to the Fireman's Parade. I love that parade because that's the only time I get to walk where you actually have the music behind you. I find myself walking a little different, you know, with the hip. So I kind of like that. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Alman Sid.
Hello, good evening. Just want to follow up on the skate park as well. I haven't seen that many people excited. I was excited since like middle school, and I didn't even skateboard. I just enjoyed watching other people do tricks. I feel like it's going to help our youth stay away from fines, trespassing, good positive things towards Middletown. As well as, um, Sunday, I know that we have the Rotary Race, but also if anyone is free after 5:00 PM, we have the Moon Festival, which is also included in our resolution, so you guys are going to hear a little bit more about that. So definitely come out. It's interesting, different culture. Learn a little bit more of diversity, I suppose. of diversity, I suppose. And like Jude has said, Saturday, our constituents' meeting, and it's unfortunate of the past two, three events that have happened recently in the past month, but it should not discourage our community as we are united. It is sad and in to hear news, especially with someone that you grew up with, went to school with, and even if we weren't close friends, he would see you, he'd also give you a, hey, hi, how are you? So please come out, if you see something, say something, because you're just enabling someone else to get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, going over the skate park, I need to thank Sean Reiser from the Parks and Rec Department, those signs out there, it was his talent, he did it from scrapped and put them out there. He really, really, really has a lot of talent, and it added to the skate park. I know he's not done, he's got other plans, but he takes it all at a scrap metal and he puts it together. When I was on the council, and I pushed for televising these meetings, I pushed for it because our constituents asked for us, we knock on doors, not everybody else does, they want it, we have commuters. A lot of people begged me not to televise these meetings, because you'll get certain people out there that will come up every time you have a meeting and, you know, make threats to the council, complain about the city of Middletown and everything. And I grew up in Middletown, wasn't born here, but I grew up in Middletown. I love Middletown. I bought my house in 1999 in Middletown. I decided to raise my four kids in Middletown. And about year 2000, Calpine came out. Calpine was a power plant in California that wanted to build a power plant in, near Middletown. I got involved. I said, why are we building a Calpine plant? Because it's natural gas, and it was clean, this is what they were pushing. Calpine backed out, CPV came in. The river keepers, meeting with them, they're gonna push to close Indian Point, they need to push Calpine and CPV's project. Then we heard about Masada. I said, oh my God, what did I do? I bought a house in Middletown where I'm gonna have a power plant, Masada, everything else, what are we doing? Got involved. I went to those public hearings in the town of Wayanda. I saw hundreds and hundreds of people, union people, everybody, people that live there, farmers that live there, for this project. I sat there with the elected officials, I asked them, why? Why would you want a power plant in their, in their backyard? Why? They got re-elected, just like the mayor said. Continuing, I've been through it, and I don't like when people come up to this council to blame this council for the project, blame the people for not being involved. You didn't pick up the paper to see the public hearing was about a power plant. This is a billion-dollar project, billion dollars. And people are telling me, well, I didn't know about the public hearings, there was no, there was no notification about the public hearings. Well, no, people were there. I met with them, I met with people from CPV, and I had concerns, concerns that it's going over Middletown. I live two and a half miles away, Alderman John Francois lives like maybe a quarter of a mile away. We don't want that. I bought my house thinking it was gonna have value, but, you know, when you come up here and you blame this council for the project, blame the town of Wayanda, blame the people who push it, blame the people who are gonna get paid for the hosting fee, blame them. They're the ones that started it, they're the ones pushing it, and, and again, it's very, very important to go back and see the public hearing. A lot of the planning board members, some of them in those towns benefit by selling land, they benefit from, from everything. You know, I don't want to see anything, and I promised myself, when I got on this council, there will never be a power plant. We fought Masada, we fought Chartwell, which is a dumping garbage train, we have pushed, I think we have had the most, as a council, pushed for more, the most solar and wind projects, that we entertain everybody. The mayor and Jacob always say, here comes another solar company coming in, what are we gonna do? I said, entertain them. We might, we might get something, they might want to take one of our reservoirs, and I have 2,500 acres, and put solar up there. But we're also gonna get the people in that area, in the town of Mount Hope, in the town of, you know, Walk Hill, that doesn't want to see this, and they're gonna say, you're killing our trees, you're killing this, you're tearing this down, and it's your fault. We understand, we're trying to come together and do something for the community. City of Middletown, it's not gonna happen while I'm on this council. You know, please, again, come to this council, address this council, but don't blame us for a project in your town or outside your town. Again, I grew up here, I love the city of Middletown, and I bought my house here, I chose to raise my four kids in this city. Thank you. New business?
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize a treasurer to transfer $29,280 to cover the retro payment 2007A retirees following the recent settlement of the collective bargaining agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Casoun, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize a treasurer to accept a donation in the amount of $75 from Sunday Delights for the Mayor's Youth Council.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Casoun, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize a treasurer to accept a donation in the amount of $500 from the Middletown Lions Club for the Mayor's Youth Council.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize a treasurer to accept a donation in the amount of $500 from the Middletown Lions Club for the Mayor's Youth Council.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to hereby establish a new zoning map for the city of Middletown dated July 1st, 2017, and amend Chapter 475 zoning section 475-6 zoning map.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Casoun, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to authorize a treasurer to transfer $1,100 within the Mayor's 2017 budget to cover higher costs from Toshiba copier than budgeted.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to accept the lowest of three bids for Cornet in the amount of $23,482.97 for upgrading data lines within City Hall.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize a treasurer to transfer $300 within the senior citizens' 2017 budget for overtime.
John Francois, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Sid to recognize September 16th every year as Chinese Arts Revival Moon Festival Day.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Sid, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Kleiner?
I'm not quite sure how they pick September 16th, I mean, it's not my understanding of when the Moon Festival is usually celebrated, and how it goes by the 15th day of the lunar, the eighth month of the lunar calendar and such, so, but I assume it's just a local version of it, and I support it, but I really don't understand it. Okay?
Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize a treasurer to transfer a total of $18,000 within the 2017 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department for various repairs to Parks Department vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize a treasurer to transfer a total of $18,000 within the 2017 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department for various repairs to Parks Department vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Casoun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.